Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us tonight. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner May, Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Paris.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Mayor Derek L. Henry.
Here.
Motion to excuse Commissioner May.
Second. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the August 2nd, 2023 City Commission meeting and the August 9th, 2023 Budget Workshop.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six zero. This time, our city manager will review our agenda if there are any changes.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Commissioner, we're asking to remove item 10C, the Growth Management and Planning Department, Volusia Square Plan Development General PDG rezoning, Development We're adding San Jacinto Prostate Cancer Ride Presentation, represented by Commissioner Reed. We're adding a presentation from Attorney Khan on an update on our Panhandling Ordinance in case Ben Gross representing.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number six, which is our presentations, and our first presentation of the night is the presentation of the Quilts of Valor.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Jim Sexton. I'm the Human Resources Director here at the City of Daytona Beach, and tonight we have a special presentation. We have been, we've brought in the Quilts of Valor organization, and they are going to award 25 of our employees tonight with a quilt of valor for their service to their country and the different military branches. But before we get started with the presentation, it's my honor to bring up the Daytona Beach Police Department Color Guard or Honor Guard to present colors tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Right face. Mark high, march. Forward, march.
Big thank you to the Daytona Beach Police Department for having their Honor Guard with us this evening. And tonight, it's my honor to introduce the representative from the Florida State of the Quilts of Valor. Her name is Terry Burchill. She is the Florida State Coordinator. She is currently the Volusia County Quilts of Valor Group Leader. And as a side note, with all her other spare time, she's the Florida Quilts of Valor Facebook Page Administrator for Florida. She's going to come up and she's going to say a few words, and then we have a great presentation about quilts of valor, and then we're going to give out some quilts to these fantastic veterans that work for us. So Terry, come on up, please.
Is this okay? Everybody hear me? So I want to thank Mr. Sexton, first of all, for getting me all the emails, because when you start something like this, it takes a while to get all this organized and coordination, and I'm such a coordinator. So I appreciate your promptness on everything, Mr. Sexton, for the emails and that. So here we are tonight, 25 veterans. I want to thank Mayor Henry and Commissioners for having me here tonight. Thank you. I would like to thank Commissioner Stacy Cantu for nominating these 25 veterans for their quilts of valor. I've been working closely with Commissioner Cantu with getting, I will be working with her closely to get the other 113 veterans awarded in soon. We're working on that. But as you know, these quilts take time to make, and you know, we get what we can done. So tonight, I'm here to do 25, and I'll do another in a short time. We'll get them done. I've had the privilege of working with Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner Henry for the Veterans of the Year Ceremony, where I met and awarded Denzel Skyes his quilt of valor not too long ago at the band show. And did I mention you had the most amazing Commissioner, the City Commissioner in all of Florida, Stacy? I met her like a few years ago, and we connected, and immediately because of her love for the veterans, law enforcement, and our firefighters and EMTs, we connected, because that's my passion. Five days from now, we will wake to the 22nd anniversary of 9/11. It's men and women such as these here tonight that took the oath to protect and defend our country and our communities, and I'm honored here tonight to be part of this, to thank each one of them for their service, their sacrifices, and their valor to our country and our communities. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Quilts of Valor was founded 20 years ago by Catherine Roberts. She's an Army mother, nurse, and quilter. Her son Nate was serving in Iraq at the time. Takes us back to 2003 was the year we had injured soldiers returning daily on MedVex. And this mother felt that we needed to wrap each veteran, or each soldier at the time, in a quilt, a patriotic quilt. As quilters, we all believe quilts equal healing. So each veteran that came home was wrapped in a quilt of valor. And then we also made sure that Walter Reed Hospital had quilts for our veterans and soldiers. We've awarded over, to this date, over 500,000 Quilts of Valor quilts. So that's over 500,000 veterans that have been awarded and wrapped. We are little over 11,000 strong members from coast to coast. We have state coordinators in every state. At this time, I would like to ask Mayor Henry, Commissioner Cantu, Commissioner Henry, and Senator Wright to come forward and help me assist with these quilts of valor. And pardon me? Yes, we're going to watch the video first.
Quilts of Valor volunteers make and give quilts compassionately, from their hearts, with no thought of thanks or reply. Sometimes, however, a recipient takes the time to say what receiving a quilt of valor means.
Both my knees were shot out. My tibia was broken. I have four bullets in my upper arm, and I got shot toward the back of my head. When I look at my quilt, it reminds me of a lot of things that I had done. It reminds me of a lot of things that people have done. I do get a sense of pride when I look at it.
It was a pretty intense combat situation again in the Hobo Woods, and I was on the outside of a tank shooting a machine gun, and I got hit by an RPG and instantly lost my left leg and my right hand, and also got scrap metal in both eyes. The quilt, sometimes when I walk by the guest room, or I'm in the guest room, it winks at me, and I'll go over and just lay down on it, and it just feels good. And it's just an example of someone's gratitude for what I've been through in the service.
I can't help but see the quilt and automatically kind of think of Afghanistan. You know, I am extremely proud of what I did overseas. I appreciate this quilt probably more than I appreciate, you know, any metal that I could have pinned on my chest, you know, because, you know, this was given to me by a civilian. It was, you know, for my service.
And I held back the tears when I did receive it. In fact, I did shed some tears. It felt very good that Vietnam veterans was finally recognized as a serviceman in the fight of the war we had. I consider the people that created the quilt part of my family now. I mean, they made this quilt for us, the veterans, and the way I see it is that they're my sisters in arms.
It was an honor. It was something I didn't expect. And matter of fact, with some of the guys that I know that went through some worse things than I did, I felt they deserved it. The people that deserved probably the quilts are not here anymore, or they never came home. I think it's actually a sight of comfort, you know? If we didn't get appreciated when we came home, this is appreciation. But I can't say how special it is. It's the only thing that's been given to me since I've been home.
There was a reassuring quality to having something made for me that touched me very deeply.
I enjoy showing it to them, and they're going to look at it whether they like it or not. So that's where it is. Everybody can see it, and I'm real proud of it. First place, I've never had anything like this, so I take a lot of pride in it. And I just feel bad about the other guys. They didn't get one. That's the only thing.
National service is not the household term it once was in a wartime America, but anyone can honor a combat veteran with a healing quilt of valor. If you're a quilter already, pull some fabric from your stash and get started. If you're not a quilter, find one to take you under their wings and help you honor an American touched by war.
There it is. All right, so now's the good part, the fun part of the evening, is we get to wrap some veterans in some quilts, so let's get that done. I'm going to ask Senator Tom Wright to help us, Mayor Henry, Commissioner Cantu, Commissioner Danette Henry, come on down. I'm going to move this podium out of the way.
I just have one more thing to say, okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, if you notice, that video is like 10 years old. Back then, it was 68,000 quilts. Now we're like 500,000. It's just amazing, the quilters, how we've awarded these veterans. But what I want to say is, I just want to read the certificate that I'm going to give each one of you tonight, but I'm not for time. I'm not going to tell it to each one of you, so I'm just sharing it, okay? So this certificate is going to have their name and their years that they served on it. And what it says is, "The Quilts of Valor Foundation wishes to recognize each one of you for your service to our nation. We consider it a privilege to do so. Though we may never know the extent of the sacrifice to protect and defend the United States of America, we award you this quilt of valor for the gratitude from a grateful nation." Okay? So I just wanted to, you're welcome.
All right, so we're going to be awarding Quilts of Valor to all city employees that served in the military. Tonight's the first 25, so over the next year, we'll be doing the others. We're going to start with the Fire Department, then we're going to have the Police Department, and then overall general employees. So first up.
Everyone is different.
Everyone's different.
Okay, now, yeah, I need your.
All right, our first honoree this evening, Mr. Gregory Bowden. Mr. Gregory Bowden is a fire lieutenant who began his employment in August of 2012. He served in the Army between 2003 and 2004. Congratulations, Gregory Bowden. Hang out right here, and then we're going to get a big group picture. So Joseph Guadino, I know I'm butchering that name. Guadino, sorry. He's a firefighter at the Fire Department here, obviously. Started here in November of 2017, served in the Army between 2010 and 2013. Congratulations, Joseph. All right, next up, please help me welcome Chase Parker. Chase is a fire lieutenant who began employment here in August of 2012. He served in the Army between the years of 2001 and 2004. Congratulations, Chase. Our next honoree could not be here this evening because he is actually deployed to active duty. Philip Pikert, Battalion Chief at the Fire Department, serving here since 2006. Army 12 to 13, and clearly in the reserves actively. All right. Our next honoree here this evening is, well, let me, the other one that couldn't be here this evening is Ryan Terry. He's a driver engineer who started in 2018. He was in the Marines between 2000 and 2004, so give it up for Ryan Terry. Our next honoree is Sean Tyree. Sean is a fire lieutenant. He started here in 2007. He served in the Army between the years of 1994 and 2005. Congratulations, Sean. All right, our next honoree could not be here this evening, but it was Lieutenant Freddie Wright. Lieutenant Wright has been with the organization at the Fire Department since 1997. He served in the Army between the years of 1987 and 1995. That's Lieutenant Freddie Wright. Here this evening from our Police Department, please welcome Timothy Blowers, everybody. He is a police sergeant. He has been with the organization since 2006. He served in the Army between the years of 1996 and 2011. Welcome Sergeant Timothy Blowers. All right. Also couldn't be this evening is Curtis Clark. Curtis is a police officer since 2018. He served in the Marines from 2015 to 2021, and unfortunately, I believe he's on duty tonight, so he could not be here this evening. But that was Curtis Clark. We just took a picture of Mr. Sergeant Tim Blowers, everybody. Our next officer here this evening is Russell Damon. Russell Damon is a police officer, has been here since September of 2019. He served in the Army from 2008 to 2017. Congratulations, Russell. And obviously, a member of our Honor Guard. All right, next up, we have Colin Howell. Colin is a police officer who has been with the organization since August of 2017. He served in the Navy from 2004 to 2012. I just noticed he's serving in our Criminal Investigations Division. I can read it on his shirt. All right, next up, Officer Christopher Endall. Christopher Endall has been with the organization since December of 2020. He served in the Navy between the years of 2008 and 2009. Congratulations, Christopher. Next up, we have Monica Lee. Monica Lee is a police officer. She has been with the organization since July of 2006. She served in the Army between the years of 2002 and 2005. Congratulations, Monica. And obviously, an esteemed member of the Honor Guard at the Police Department. Next up is Police Officer Sherrod Molet. Sherrod served in the Air Force between the years of 2012 and 2019. He has been with the Daytona Beach Police Department since May of 2021. Congratulations, Sherrod. He is my safety officer. He works in the Risk Management Department, but Byron Kirk Bullock could not be this evening, but he started here in November of 20. He served in the Army between the years of 1982 and 1985. So congratulations to Mr. Bullock. I know this man's here this evening because I talked to him, and his name is Bobby Butler. Bobby Butler is a maintenance supervisor, too. He has been at this organization since 1993. He served in the Marines between the years of 1978 and 1988. Congratulations, Bobby Butler. Next up, right out of the Clerk's Office, and she serves here every Commission meeting, Kim Gadson. Kim Gadson is a research specialist, has been at the organization since October of 2019. She served in the Army between the years of 1981 and 1987. Congratulations, Kim. Next up, this man has been promoted since we have made this list, but Doug Gutierrez. Doug Gutierrez, our Planning Manager. Doug has been with the organization since September of 2015. He served in the Navy between the years of 1978 and 1982. Congratulations, Doug. Next up, out of our Utilities Department, is Christopher Priest. Christopher is a lift station mechanic who has been with the organization since June of 2011. He served in the Army between the years of 2007 through 2016. Congratulations, Chris. Vincent Rollerson. Vincent Rollerson is a licensed wastewater plant operator. He's been at the organization since July of 2000. He served in the Army between the years of 1981 to 1987. Congratulations, Vincent. Come on down. He represented the blue collar workers for many years as a union president. All right, next up, we have Zeb Saul. Zeb has moved up through the ranks, and he is currently our Utility Field Coordinator. He's been with the organization since April of 2007. He served in the Army between the years of 2004 and 2007. All right, thank you, Zeb. Next up, out of Utilities, is our Stormwater Management Program Database Coordinator. Her name is Tracy Shira. Tracy has been with the organization since October of 2018. She served in the Navy from 1984 to 1987. Congratulations, Tracy. Unfortunately, the next one called me at the last minute, said she couldn't make it, but it's Shelley Chofranek. She's right out of our Communication and Marketing Department. She is our Marketing Coordinator. She's been here since 2019 and served in the Air Force from 1992 to 1999. Thank you for your service, Shelley. Next up, our Parks and Recreation Manager. Give it up for Vincent Terry, everybody. Vincent has been with the organization since September of 2005. He served in the Army between the years of 1984 and 1999. Congratulations, Vincent. Thank you, Vincent. And last but not least for this evening, please welcome Philip Tramarki. Philip is the Autocad and Drafting Specialist in our Public Works Department Engineering. He's been with the organization since February of 1999. He served in the Air Force from 1977 to 1998. Congratulations, Philip, and thank you for your service. All right, we're going to get one big group photo. If I could get all the Quilts of Valor to come in here and try to squeeze in here. Maybe the Commissioners can get up on the podium behind them, so we can see you all. Senator, you flank them on one side or the other? Terry, you should get in there, too. Yeah, yeah, come on. I'm good. Thank you, Doug. Let's stand there. Yeah, so I tell you what, it's... Is there a way while we're taking that picture, that zoom down, we can catch, she wants like a backside shot of them? And we can take a skilled photo of that? How'd Bobby Bullock get in the center of that nonsense? Can you get the Senator in? That's right. We'll Photoshop you in later, sir. You want them turned around, right, so you can see the back? It might feel rude, but backs to the camera. All right, one more round of applause for all our veterans that got the Quilts of Valor tonight. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners, for indulging us in that presentation. You guys have a busy meeting tonight.
I want to say that I don't want it ever to be said in Daytona Beach that we do anything less than love our veterans. And I would like to say that there's very little that you can do more important, I think, than when a veteran comes home, one, you welcome them home, but two, you make sure that they have opportunities for employment. And I'm proud of our city because we have 113 veterans working for us. And to the hands that did the heavy lifting on this project, thank you. That's all I want to say.
Senator Wright, as always, thank you.
Okay, we're going to carry on with the presentation for Sun Chasers, and Commissioner Paula Reed will present.
Yeah, thank you.
The Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all for inviting us and why are we here? We're here to recognize an amazing Commissioner. So let me just talk about that real quick. On Saturday, September 2nd, bikers for charity, Sun Chasers, and the Divine Divas Motorcycle Club hosted a prostate cancer awareness charity event, which included a walk around Cypress Park and a motorcycle ride through the historic Loop District. And it was very impressive. We had about 60 to 65 police officers, police agencies in the Volusia County area, to include Flagwood County. So thank those police officers for leading us on that ride. This event was amazingly successful due to the contributions of a lot of citizens. The Honorable Mayor Henry stopped by and greeted participants in the warmest ways, and he espoused his unwavering support for this initiative. You left us very inspired when you left that meeting. Thank you so much for that. We also had a surprise from a former senator via a Zoom call. His name is Tony Hill, and he provided the participants a powerful testimony of being a survivor of prostate cancer. In addition, Bethune-Cookman University, as they would say, they showed up, and they showed out. So we had Dr. Urban Robinson, Professor of Anatomy and Physiology. He provided the medical lens to understand this terrible disease. Dr. Adrian Rose, Assistant Professor of the Department of Psychology, he talked about the psychological effects of prostate cancer, not only on the victim, but also on the family members. And we had Dr. Sherma Butz, is currently the Assistant Professor of Biology in College of Natural Health and Sciences, and she brought a team of students with her, and they're part of the WENT Project. And the WENT Project started during the pandemic, and they provide data and facts about any disease or any pandemic that's occurring during that time. Our own, Sam Ferguson, also shared some testimonies about his experience being a survivor of prostate cancer. Also, we'd like to recognize Ms. Linda McGee and Islamic Center for their contributions, as well as Dwayne Fernandez and the Heart Knocks Photography for catching the key moments of during this event. We had a host of sponsors to include Humana, Cricket Communications, Fresh Book Festivals, and who else are not listed as sponsors? Crass Stop, absolutely. And who's that? Daytona One. Just shout them out. Ocean, Ocean East? Resort, okay, thank you. So we had a lot of sponsors. All of the sponsors, supporters, and participants, but there was one driving force that made this community health initiative a success, and that is our very own Zone Six Commissioner, Paula Reed. So on behalf of bikers for charity, the Sun Chasers Motorcycle Club, and the Divas Motorcycle Club, this is a shining star award to Commissioner Paula Reed in appreciation for your dedication, support, and hard work. We really appreciate it.
And then over here, over here.
Mayor and City Commissioners.
Mayor and City Commissioners, at this point, I wanted to have you speak or hear from our outside counsel in the panhandling lawsuit. Michael Kahn, as you know, it was reported in the newspaper earlier this week that the court in that case issued an injunction against the city's enforcement of the panhandling ordinance in accordance with state statute. We are requesting that the Commission hold a shade meeting prior to the next City Commission meeting on the 20th, and Mr. Kahn is here to address you as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. And I want to, basically, I heard the introduction as a more or less of an update of the status of the panhandling ordinance. It's really, what I'm here to do is support Mr. Gross's request for a shade meeting. And the reason for that in this instance is because I want to tell the Commission and answer any Commissioner's questions at that point in time of my next steps that I am looking to defend the ordinance. Without going into too much detail at this meeting, it's really in support of Mr. Gross's request that there be a shade meeting. The reason for a shade meeting is very simple. Instead of a public meeting with regard to this, because a public meeting permits the opponents to hear what we're saying and what I'm asked. A shade meeting is just that. It means that everything that's said during the meeting is kept entirely private. Suffice to say that I can say that I have, I support the ordinance. I don't agree certainly with parts of what the paper said. Nobody called and asked me like they usually do, or I would have directly commented on it, and I have direct plans to continue its defense. And that's really what I'm here to say. It really behooves me to be unable, unable to answer any direct questions because of what I said. Not have any fear of answering any questions, and what I mean by that is, as we've had different shade meetings in the past, as you'll recall, I answer every question that any person puts toward me directly and straightforwardly. And I will just say that I continue to support this ordinance for reasons, and I have direct strategic objectives to do next. And the best way to do that is at a shade meeting, when you can ask me whatever question you want to ask me, and I will be able to answer all of the questions or any of the questions without fear of my opponents being able to hear what I'm going to say or what I'm going to do next. And that's the best way I can say it. Other than that, Mr. Gross, I surrender to your microphone, really.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Can I get a consensus or a motion to authorize the shade meeting for the September 20th at 5:00 p.m.?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying hi. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Make sure to get it on the calendar.
May I ask why we had to have that?
The state statute requires us to request a shade meeting in an open City Commission meeting.
Each time we have a shade meeting, we request it?
Yes.
Or is it on the agenda?
The statute requires us to request that we have a shade meeting in an open meeting.
Okay. I just don't recall having a presentation of that nature, I guess. Must have been different. Have we done that in the past?
I don't think that we've typically had a presentation, but Mr. Kahn wanted to be here in case you had any broad questions about what's going on.
No, I'm not going to ask any questions in public. No. Okay.
Can you explain this is not nothing new? We've had shade meetings before.
Shade meetings are an exception to the sunshine law that allow you to get the same benefit of counsel than anybody else would have in the context of lawsuits.
Thank you.
And would you also explain that although it's just us at that time, that meeting is recorded and is made public afterwards?
Right.
We're not hiding anything?
Right. We have to keep transcripts of the meeting. Attendance is very limited. The topic is very limited, and after the lawsuit's over, the transcripts are made public.
Okay. I'm going to move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda, and I've had no one sign up for the consent agenda.
John not here?
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis. Doyle?
Go on, Doyle.
Wow. I'm back.
Yeah, you've been gone a while.
My name is Doyle Lewis. I'm here to represent the people of Daytona Beach that's in need. My very first concern is your bicycle rack out back. It seemed to got smaller than it was. You used to be able to get two or three or four bicycles locked on it. Now you can get one or two. But yet, the bicycles... The bicycles are being sold and sold and sold, and they're electric bicycles. I don't see another bicycle on the property. In the bicycle rack. That's my first comment. My second comment is the business rents are going sky high on the small warehouses. I've got receipts for two and a half years right here. They doubled in price in two and a half years. That's my business warehouse in Daytona Beach. The businesses that own the property seem to just raise the rents anytime they want on anybody they want. I don't think they do it to everybody. I think they do it to people that they pick out. And I'll just leave that at that until the end, till I find out what else I got to hear tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doyle Lewis.
All right, Doyle. Thank you, sir.
I'll give y'all copies of them doubling my rent, trying to get me out of town.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying hi. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0, 6-0.
So we're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine A is the City Manager's Office. This is the budget for the fiscal year 2023-24, property taxes, and budget for the city of Daytona Beach. Our first item is the public hearing. Members of the general public may speak on the proposed military and the budget. I have one speaker so far, Dennis Detore.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Detore. I'm a resident here of Daytona Beach. Been a resident only for two years now.
Address?
Come Veterans Day.
Your dress? Your address?
Now it's 907 Sycamore Street in Daytona Beach. Now it's 907 Sycamore Street in Daytona Beach. It was 581 Fremont Avenue, but the city has recently changed it because my front door happens to be on Sycamore and my driveway is on Sycamore, so it just seemed like the right thing to do. So we've changed that address, in case you need to know that. Okay? Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak in front of you all. I really wasn't expecting what I did have the opportunity to witness here tonight in respect to all of my fellow comrades that have served. It was really nice that they've got that kind of recognition. It becomes a memorial day for me because of my lost brothers and sisters that gave all, not to mention those during the Vietnam era that had come back with some really serious mental situations or whatnot. So it's nice to see that people do get honored, but I hope that everybody can remember in their heart those that are fallen brothers and sisters that never made it back for whatever reason. And if anybody remembers what the Vietnam era was and what the returning veterans had to face when they came back here, you'd probably understand that we had a little bit of a different situation than the way we're treated today. However, that's another story. My main intent here was because of a, not a tax bill, but a notice of what is happening. And according to this agenda, the public hearing that was slated for today is what I really came for. It says in that that I have the opportunity to give my opinions to you all individually and collectively, and that's a great opportunity to have, and also bring up some questions that I might have, and hopefully I can get some clarification on some of these questions. I can make a point about the fact that the market value of homes, there seems to be no rhyme nor reason to how that's really, it's not explained what that rhyme or reason is on how they come up with changing that. My first year here, my taxes were assessed value was the exact same thing as my market value. Now, that may not seem like a difficult thing, but this year, my market value has increased by over $38,000, $38,000, $38,003 to be exact. However, my assessed value has only increased $3,954.
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
But because you addressed the veterans, we'll give you one minute, only because you addressed the veterans, which could have been on the consent agenda, and this is probably your first time coming.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the extra time. Then I'll get right to the questions on the back where explanation of the property appraisals. How much is the limit is what my question is. There is a, there are limits that are assigned to the assessments of property that can be increased each year, but it doesn't explain to me what that limit is and whether it's a percentage, whether it's a specific dollar figure or what. The next thing that I would really like to address on the agenda is everything that I look at, okay, a few pennies one way or the other, depending on which department it is, whether it comes out of the left pocket, the right pocket, the same pair of pants. It comes out with some really interesting numbers, but all of them seem to be, if you balance them all out, they're all an increase, every single one of them, except one thing on this paper. The only thing that anybody neglects to look at is the homestead exemptions and veterans extensions. I see no increases in that ever. It's established that a particular thing, but yet taxes can come out and we can have all kinds of raises, but we can't have anything to go into the homestead.
Your time's up.
My time is up. I thank you for the time that you have given me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That was my only speaker for the, for the public hearing portion of this. So we're going to move on to the first resolution. So it's a resolution, public hearing, resolution tentatively determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation and making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 5.4300 per 1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the city of Daytona Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024, and the voted debt service mileage of 0.1749 and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry. No other comment. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to 9A3, this is a resolution, a resolution tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024, for the city of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in estimated amount of $332,679,696, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $332,679,697, of which operating expenditures total $246,198,112, transfers $62,557,687, and capital expenditures at $23,923,898, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
At this time, we'll need to adjourn for the DDA.
At this time, we will need to adjourn for the DDA to convene, and we will reassemble after they finish their business. Let us reconvene our meeting.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9C, which is the Growth Management and Planning Department, Daytona Hyundai Plan Development General, rezoning. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Co. to rezone 4.4 plus or minus acres of property located the northwest corner of Madison Avenue and Nova Road, 700 North Nova Road, from PDG Plan Development General, BA Business Automotive, and MFR 20, Mount T Family Residential 20, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Hyundai Plan District Agreement to allow for an accessory car wash and incorporate vehicle display pads and a sign plan for the development, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. So moved. Suck it.
We have a motion and a second.
And I do have Mr. Rob Merho for any applicant questions.
All right, no questions? Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. No questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Yes, sir.
Moving on to item 9D, it's the Growth Management and Planning Department, NASCAR Lot 7 Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Co. to rezone 191.41 plus or minus acres of property, generally located on the north northwest side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, west of Jimmy Ann Drive and south of LBJ Boulevard, from general industrial M3 and industrial park M4 zoning to Plan Development General, approving the NASCAR Lot 7 Plan District Agreement to allow for the development of an outdoor activity field and additional educational, office, industrial, recreational, and retail uses, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move with the supplemental and the package regarding the land uses.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have any other questions or comments?
Can Mr. Merrill just explain a little bit what they want to do?
That's kind of an open question. What we're doing here essentially is this has got industrial zoning on it now. We've been using it for some agricultural uses and for parking short term, as I think you might know. In the meantime, we've also had some events there, some things that have happened, including the historic motorcycle racing that we did out there that we want to memorialize in this PD, as well as the long-term plans, which could involve some of the uses that you see on the, on the list. We've actually reduced the uses from not just the general category of industrial, but the ones that you guys have asked as along this process to be reduced. So it's a much smaller list, all of which involves, you know, a lot of different things that could happen on this property, so, including the continued use that we're making now in some of these interim uses.
Curious if they had anything specific in mind?
If I had a plan to show you, I would. We're not at that point. Thanks.
And I'd just like to say thank you.
Yeah. We good?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item 9E, it's Growth Management and Planning Department, Parkview Church Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Co. to rezone 6.90 plus or minus acres of property located the northwest corner of International Tennis Drive and LBJ Boulevard, from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Parkview Church Plan District Agreement to allow for the development of a place of worship with accessory recreation uses and special events, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second.
I do have one speaker. Mr. Mayor, it's Mr. Frederick Brown.
Good evening. Frederick Brown, Daytona Beach, Crystal Ridge, Daytona Beach. I chose to spoke on this one because nobody speaks against the church, and I figured maybe I'd be better heard. Now, I'm not opposed to the church and what it's trying to do, and my concern is this. When God came down and told Noah to build an ark, he did it for a reason. He knew floodwaters were coming. I may not be God, but I'm telling you, floodwaters are coming. Now, the property, if you studied the map carefully, is surrounded by retention pond. I hope the church has enough money to put in a whole lot of fill dirt, and they may be the only island left. We're already experiencing the problems now. It continues to get worse, and as you build on top, I'll constantly remind you, you are removing natural drainage and adding runoff. I didn't speak on the previous items around the agenda, but you have the same issues going on on the items C and D. Again, retention ponds are up there. I've been to the DIM meetings, and I can tell you, when you vote six zero, seven zero to favor all these projects, I highly suggest that you take a walk through some of these properties, in the summertime, not in the fall when it's nice and dry, but on typical day, and I'm not asking to do it after hurricane, but you need to take a walk in these properties and see how much muck is standing on them. I also ask that every one of you, and I certainly hope that you can get a copy of it and carefully review it, look at the 1952 geological survey map of Daytona Beach and look at it very carefully. That's the oldest one that's on publication that you can get a copy of. And if you look at that, and those who have known Daytona for a while know that there was nothing out there back then, except for what? Swamp. And that swamp was our protector. And as we continue to build on this swamp, we're losing our protector. Now, I know a lot of this zoning went on, and we previously, and I've heard it countless times, how previous administrations approved that. But this administration is going to have to start doing something for the people in the future, your kids, your grandchildren who live here in Daytona. And I know some of you, the mayor in particular, live out in that area, you're going to be more directly affected than some of the rest of us. But I ask you to remember, you know, what happened to the citizens in Midtown and Newtown, and all that runoff that you're adding to everything is going to continue to flow up the river and back down to Halifax again, and it's going to rise, raise all boats, as they say. Again, you're going to approve it, but heed my warning. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor, I would like to speak. Actually, that meeting, when they had the required meeting, I was there with the whole congregation. Not one person was against this project. It was originally part of the Bayberry's PD, which could be a 7-Eleven, and actually, this is going to be less traffic because Grand Champion is where the congregation is. I think they've been meeting for over five years. Am I correct? Five years. They have 250 towards their congregation, which they have two services, and most of all the residents live in Bayberry and Mosaic. So most of them will be riding bikes and walking to church, and I so do approve this project. Yes, they do.
I too am in favor of it, and I think that we need a worship center in this neighborhood, and I hope that the number doubles from 250 to 500 rather quickly. And I look forward to visiting you and fellowshiping with you and my family. So we're supportive. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have no other questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries gladly, six zero. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Midtown, excuse me, Finance Department, Midtown CRA Bank Loan, Series 2023. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing issuance by the city of Daytona Beach Community Redevelopment Agency of its redevelopment revenue note, Series 2023, an amount not exceeding $6,500,000 secured by a lien on amounts deposited into the agency's redevelopment trust fund for the purposes of financing the costs associated with certain redevelopment projects undertaken in accordance with the agency's redevelopment plan, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the agency, providing for covenant by the city to budget an appropriate non-advalorem revenues in the event of a shortfall of amounts in such trust fund and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the public hearing and final action is set for September 20th. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Growth Management and Planning Department, First Amendment to Caris Old Cold Storage PD, rezoning. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Caris Plan District Agreement to modify parking for industrial uses, memorialize existing billboards on the property, increase permitted wall signage standards, allow for electronic center signs, and permit the removal of an additional historic tree. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment and repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance? Okay. The public hearing and final action is set for September 20th. So item number 10C was pulled from our agenda this evening, so that was my last agendad item. Yeah, so we can do.
Commissioner Cantu. We commence with you.
I don't think I have anything at this time.
All right. I had my, I could have given my presentation tonight. Quilt lady, please.
And Mike.
Commissioner Reed?
I just want to remind everybody about the concert in the park, our last Midtown concert on September 16th. And then I just want to say that I am elated to share with you all that on yesterday was the actual day and date of my work anniversary at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. I started 9/5 of 1995. I made 28 years on yesterday.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. That concludes my comments, sir.
Awesome. Commissioner Parrish?
I just wanted to say that last week was my first hurricane as a commissioner, and I'm just very happy that we weren't affected. Knock on wood. I wanted to thank Captain Williams for the numerous updates. I was very impressed with staff and how everything was prepared beforehand, even with the sandbags, our communications team, so it was a very proud moment, and I'm glad that we didn't have to use all the services. So it was a very proud moment, and I'm glad that we didn't have to use all the services that were available and ready. And then also, the substation opened on Grand View, which was monumental, which was really nice also. I wish them much success, and I hope now that they're there also, when you're super prepared, you really don't need things. So I hope that comes to fruition. And happy belated birthday to Derek Fiecher. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Since we have done our redistricting, I would like to commit $80,000 in ARPA funds for Main Street Lights and Cameras. I would also like to do $40,000 for MMB and Midtown Lights and Cameras. That's not my zone, but I would like to maybe get contagious, and somebody over there would like to catch on with that because we've got, and we've already committed to do that with Seabreeze. And also, I would like to commit, donate $1,000 in Bike Week funds to Beachside Neighborhood Watch for a grill to cook for the police during special events. And that's all the trouble I can stir up tonight. Thank you.
That's good trouble, good trouble.
So we'll be bringing those back, so you can vote on it formally as a resolution in accordance with our normal practice.
Okay. Was that the last one?
Well, I was just hoping we could get somebody else to throw something in with MMB and Midtown.
Okay, I will definitely be doing that once they have a final number and plan. I've already committed, do I need to re-submit that for 20,000 for, because it was 100,000, right? For Main Street? Seabreeze? It's already.
Seabreeze, yeah, it's already been done.
Okay. But once we get a little more knowledge in numbers, I'm going to definitely follow because we just, the lights and everything, they're just important. He just, that's his system, okay?
Coffe.
I'm happy that we're having to do that. That's an important initiative that we've wanted for a long time. And so, you know, it's an opportunity. I have no remarks tonight, so I'll be quiet. We thank you for the presentations of the evening. And at this time, we will hear our city manager, Mr. Gross.
No, sir.
May I say one more thing? I do want to thank you all for your participation, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Fiecher, and those of us from the council that did attend a chance for redemption, the play by Lynn Thompson. I think there were a lot of provoking ideas that came out of the discussions they had after the play on the two nights, and I think it's going to help us to move forward. And I'd like to thank him, Sheila, his daughter Ty, Ken Hunt for housing, the professional staff, and I think, and Daytona State for what all they did for us as well. I think we had an excellent presentation for the community, and the community came out.
Yeah, they definitely, it was awesome, phenomenal. Okay. We'll hear from our residents at this time.
Okay. Our first speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is John Navara. I said that loud enough so you could hear me?
Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach. I'm here tonight to talk about the lighting. There's a need for lighting in the Live Oak Park. There's a lot of homeless people sleeping in that park, Zone Six, where nothing gets done. There's a lot of homeless people sleeping in that park out there, and drugs are taking place, and it's dark out there. And I see on the agenda tonight where you're supposedly putting, FPL is going to have an easement for a parking lot, lighting in the Daisy Stocking Park. But it is critical that you get over there. And that park has been dark, that is black dark over there. They need to go over there, find a power light or whoever. I bought this stuff before, and nothing was done about it. So since it's on the agenda that you're going to do it for the Daisy Stocking Park, you need to get over to Live Oak Park. Also, Live Oak Park, Live Oak Street is in terrible condition. It's all cracked up. There's a lot of, when you go outside, you see the people put all kind of furniture and garbage on the side of the road, and that needs to be corrected. The other streets that need to be parked, that need to be paved in this town is Lincoln Street that runs up to Dorit April. So we are hoping that you all will do your job. A lot of you are for reelection. I was honored in the Daytona Times, a big article about me and how I speak up, and how I was able to get the people back in the city commission meeting after the former city manager, and you, not you, Stacey, you wasn't here, I'm honored, Ken, but the rest of you were here. And you should have never allowed that to happen because he tried that over in Daytona, and the people said, no, we're not going to take our taxpayers out of me. And it wasn't until Derek Fiecher got here, and I advocated for him to be our city manager. So this is the, that's in the article where I was honored in the Daytona Times about how I was able to speak up for those. And since we have no representation in my zone, came the commissioner, and she just agreed with me, failed to meet, she had a meeting, she didn't show up. She said, let's do it again. And that never happened, that was eight years ago. So service is a price you pay, it was in the article, for the space you occupy, but they misquoted me in the Daytona Times, and you are occupying space here, and you're getting paid to do it. So you're up for reelection, do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. You thank the Daytona Times for their groundbreaking interviewing skills. It was an excellent job. They did a great job. They did.
Our next speaker is John Navara, and on deck is Cicely Grandal.
John?
John Navara, 168 Springwood Drive, Daytona Beach. Recently, there was an, a presentation on National Public Radio about the flooding and the Army Corps of Engineers working in Roanoke, Virginia. And some of the news was positive, some of the news was negative, but it sounded a lot like Daytona Beach. They said that the good part was that there was a lot of help for the homes on the beach because they were of the most value. And they said that, and fact check anything I say, just for the record, they protected the best, the, you know, most pricey homes in the area. And then the lower income homes were not as protected with the programs that they had. And so there was a lot of criticism of that in Roanoke. And so it sounded a lot like our area, and there was a lot of positive changes that they proposed, that they paid for, and that they researched. But what concerned me was that people were expecting a lot more for the flooding in the inner areas away from the ocean, and we have that same situation here. So hopefully, we'll get better news from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they will have some proposals to help our area. But the report was a little bit of a caveat for us, that of what we might expect, and we may have a situation in which people in the Midtown would be expecting more, and people from the beachside may benefit more, and then we may have, you know, competition in the, in the area, and we want to help the people all over Daytona Beach. I just thought I'd report that, and you can fact check it and see what was going on in Roanoke. And I do support the Army Corps of Engineers and any information we can get, any proposals for what we can do to help all citizens in the city. I would greatly appreciate it, but that's what they reported, and it just was all concerning to me. But we have a different area, different time, maybe different researchers, so we can hope for the best. Thank you.
And a different focus. Ours is focused on the Nova Canal. So it's not, not a similar in that way. It's not focused on the beachside.
Okay, so I knew that our area is different, but it just sounded so similar, our area and Roanoke, Virginia, that it sounded like they're talking about us, and I know that they're going to come out with the report at some point, and then the public is going to be scrutinizing it. And, you know, there might be a lot of emotion with it, and it's a very important subject because it affects the livelihood and the values of all the properties in our community. So we hope for the best, and that's what I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, I'm sorry, is it Cecilia Grandal? And on deck is Frederick Brown.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Grandal. I live at 1200 Bevel Road here in Daytona. I've been here in Daytona for six months now. And as a disabled person, this is my reason for being here tonight. I live on Bevel Road, and many a times, I'm on the, across the road from Walmart, and I've come so close to being hit by cars that come running down that Bevel Road on the right-hand side, turning right to go Walmart or wherever they're going. They don't stop, they don't look, they just keep flying and taking that right-hand turn. I would very much love to see signs put up, no turn on red or something, and possibly our wonderful police department policing that area a little bit and maybe handing out some tickets to make people realize, you've got to watch for pedestrians. Not only myself, but other disabled people, but there's a blind lady that crosses that road several times also. And only by the grace of God, is all I can say, that she's not been hit. So I'm here on behalf of all of us disabled people, hoping that there will be something done to fix this, to stop people from almost hitting pedestrians. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I think we talked earlier, just so you know, Bevel Road is a state road, and if you want to leave your information over to Kim, I'll give you a call, and I will contact DOT. I can't promise anything. Okay?
Okay. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Sylvester Peterson.
Frederick Brown, 1501 Crystal Ridge. First of all, I want to talk about veterans, since we had a nice presentation earlier. Some of you may recall, especially during the election of 2016, when there was a whole row of politicians at the Memorial Bridge, just looking for votes, no doubt, but under the mask of celebrating our veterans. And the Memorial Bridge, which took forever to build, way over budget, way over time, but part of that project was also to build a veterans' park. Now, this is a county project, and I was in touch with them quite often, and with the county engineer, and as to why this was all taking so long. But what disturbs me most, all of this, is ever since the bridge opened in 2020, the veterans' park is all but forgotten. But it isn't by the veterans, I assure you that. Little bit of money was spent fixing up the wall there after the storms. The county committed to no later than October of that year, starting whether they had the funds or not. And those of you who might not be aware of it, we don't have all the funds for it. The other problem, the more we drag our feet and the time we take, the further we get away from the totals that we need because of inflation, which has been outrageous in the past couple of years. With that said, I know this isn't the city's position, but I would like to see the city, since it is in our city, be more supportive and try to help push this project through. And I know the city and the county don't like to step on each other's toes, but I think it's time, we need to work together and push this project through. I want to thank Commissioner Cantu for attending the Memorial Museum, the Veterans Museum and Library, which is now officially a Purple Heart certified library and museum. I was very proud to be there as part of the honor guard. I've been involved in the project there for a while, and I'm glad to see us continue to move forward. In conjunction with what Ms. Johnson had to say about lighting, please consider putting, and this is city property, putting some streetlights out there. It's dark, dark, dark. And as far as the other thing I wanted to talk about, don't have much time, I want to thank the city for doing the right thing this year that they didn't do last year. There was a generator out there at Betts Park, the pump was actually functioning, and the lakes were pumped down. I do firmly believe, had that been done last year, millions of dollars and a lot of personal aggravation could have been avoided. So keep doing the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sylvester Peterson, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
The veterans' memorial bridge, and I wasn't there to talk to voters about voting, so I didn't appreciate that remark. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, my name is Sylvester Peterson, 408 Fremont Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. Okay, I've addressed it twice, but I guess it'd take some time with them. Fremont and Seagrave, that area is real bad with the prostitution and the drugs. Probably going to take some time, but it's still happening. I see more police presence. I think, yeah, that's good, it's good. But they're very witty, you know, they'll wait till they leave, and, you know, they know how to do all that stuff. They, but anyway, it's still going on, and still sleeping out in the wood, wooded areas. Matter of fact, we had a fire probably about two weeks ago in one of these areas, and the fire department had to go out and put the fire out over by the golf course in that area. It's a nice, nice fire, too. And, but they were able to put it out. You know, there it is again. These people are living and sleeping in these areas, and this type of stuff can happen, you know? I don't know if anybody got hurt, I don't know. But it was a nice, pretty big fire, and it could have got worse than that, you know, because people live in that area. But, I mean, what, we going to wait till somebody, you know, something really happened? You know, let's kind of like get these people out of the area. And then Live Oak Park, still dark. It's still dark, they still sleeping out there. So I don't know, I guess it's going to take some time. Now, I spoke to the captain that was here, I think, the last time I was here, I think I spoke to a captain. And I think Commissioner Parrish had something to do with that. Now, when I was, when he was talking to me, he referred to some of these people, I don't know, he used the word victim. He was using the word victim, I don't know if he, he didn't really clarify, but he was saying something about them being victims. I don't know what he meant by that, but I don't know if they looking at them as being victims. I don't know. But if he's saying that, I mean, what's the percentage of, I mean, who are we talking about? What victim? I mean, these people are committing crimes, right? Prostitution is a crime. Buying drugs is a crime, I thought. I mean, I mean, they might have problems, but we can't allow them to do that. We can't allow them out there to, you know, that's not helping them if they are victims. So I didn't understand what he was saying by that, but I didn't ever get, I didn't ever get him back on the phone, but, yeah, he used the word victims.
Did he say victimless crimes, sir?
No, he said some of these people are victims, is what he, you know, his actual words. He said some of these people are victims, because he said they convicted some guy that was beating some of these women up, these females, he was beating them up or whatever, and he was making them do what they was doing, but they got him. I think they gave, he said he gave him a lot of time.
Your time's up.
Oh, my time?
Yep, thank you. Mayor, can I speak regarding the Memorial, Memorial Bridge? I'm not sure Frederick Brown knows. I'm not sure Frederick Brown knows that's a county bridge in the first place? Oh, okay. But I wasn't elected official at the time, but I was a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 316, and I did go over the bridge with them. And I'm a member of the Marine Corps Daytona and the DAV, Chapter 84. And I was a member of the VVA, Chapter 1048. And I didn't see one politician up there campaigning. All I did is see you guys ride over the bridge with the veterans. So I just want to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Doyle Lewis.
My name is Doyle Lewis. When I was younger, I did not like speaking in front of people. Somehow, I learned I had to. The day that bridge opened up on Orange Avenue, I waited for it and waited for it and waited for it to open up. I was there. I didn't see nobody looking for votes. I seen the mayor there, I seen lots of people there, seen a lot of veterans there. I seen the people across on the island there. They were just happy it finally opened up, and that was it. We were able to use it. I rode across it with my bicycle. I just added that. Now, this is my real thing. People want to save the world. I don't think they know how. I think the world will save itself. Bicycles are a great thing, and so are cars, but walking's even better. That Walmart area on Bevel really does need some work. I've actually been doing a lot of repaving and doing sign holding for traffic control for the repaving. Every day, I almost get run over by 10 cars. Every single day, I'm out there, 10 hours a day in the heat. I do it part-time. So we need to start talking to FDOT. They might not like it, but they're going to hear from me. I'm standing there, repaving their roads, and they almost run me over every day. Now, as far as the rents and the taxes, for some reason, for some reason, the homeowners that don't live in their homes seem to affect the renters a lot more than they should. I'm not sure why that's happening, but renters don't have that much choice because they don't own the property. I'm a home builder. I'll never let my mother have a key to my house again. You understand that? You should. Thank you.
All right, that's our final speaker. Oh, we got one more? Ms. Nice?
Yes.
I did see you come up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to thank Mr. Mayor, Chief Young, Commissioner Strickland. We had an outstanding police substation opening event, and I just wanted to personally thank you all for your dedication, your commitment, your leadership in this area because that afternoon was inspiring, it was encouraging, like nothing I have ever seen before on beachside. Beachside is our jewel, and although unfortunately Daytona Beach gets a lot of negative publicity, especially on social media, about our beachside and the bars, there's a whole other side to the beachside that is wonderful. It's almost like Mayberry. Our neighborhoods, our neighbors, the connection between all of us working together is really something to behold. And I, for one, and many in my neighborhood share my views, are excited about it. I very much appreciate Commissioner Cantu also attending, Commissioner Parrish also attending the event. It was very special and very appreciated. And lastly, if you missed the Mason Avenue meeting, Mason is critically important. We're doing such a good job with One Daytona, the Mall, and the Esplanade being so beautiful. So as a TPO member, I encourage you to get as many people involved in reviewing what's being done. It's critically important. We may not have another design renovation that's sorely needed for Mason Avenue for, I don't know, 10 years or so plus, depending on the funding source. But if you miss the meeting, or any of your constituents miss the meeting, I do have comment forms that you can pass out here to anyone who's interested or has an opinion or a concern about it. And also, here's the contact information for the Mason Avenue Project Manager. So, good night, and thank you so much again for your encouragement. We're on a good trail here.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are, thank you. And that was one of the great moments in our beachside. And the substation looks great. Kudos to Chief Young and to the staff, manager, and everyone for bringing that to fruition. And thank you, Ms. Nice, and Ken and everyone. Final thing. When I seek a vote, I will do one of two things. And I think I say this for most people I know who are elected. I will send you some correspondence in the mail, or I will knock on your door. I will not go to a public event for votes. Good night.